All right, good evening. Welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education Regular Meeting of Monday, April 9th, 2018. Call and roll, please.
Mr. Hadromil.
Here.
Ms. Innis.
Here.
Mr. Stark.
Here.
Ms. Step.
Here.
Four members present?
Okay, item three, we're gonna call up our Citizens of the Month. All of these youngsters were, are being recognized this month by their school, by their teachers. So everybody make a single file line right here, please. All right, ready? Okay. What's your name?
Mari Truax.
And what grade are you in?
First grade.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Sprinkle.
What would you like to be in the crowd?
An artist and an actress.
Very good. Go to the end of the line, but stay in line, okay? And what's your name?
Sariah.
And what grade are you in?
Second.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Howlers.
We want to be in the crowd.
Doctor.
What's your name?
Emily.
And what grade are you in, Emily?
Third.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Truax.
Yeah, we want to be in the crowd.
Art teacher.
Very nice. Hi, buddy. What's your name?
Nolan.
Nolan, what grade are you in?
Junior graduate.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Hoffman.
And what would you like to be in the crowd?
High school student.
Awesome.
Oh, that's a great one.
What's your name?
Cola.
And what grade are you in?
First.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Schultz.
What would you like to be in the crowd?
A soccer player.
Very good. Awesome. What's your name, buddy?
Preston.
Preston, what grade are you in?
Junior graduate.
And who's your teacher?
Ms. Hoffman.
We want to be in the crowd.
A police.
Police officer? Awesome. What's your name?
Alyssa.
Alyssa, what grade are you in?
Third.
And who's your teacher?
Ms. Macamino.
What would you like to be in the crowd?
An artist.
Artist, a few artists. What's your name?
Alexis Adams.
And what grade are you in, Alexis?
Second.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Gonzalez.
And what would you like to be in the crowd?
A nurse.
A nurse, very, very awesome. Good job, everybody. So you guys are still in line, right? So if everybody would please stand, these guys are gonna start us on a Pledge of Allegiance.
At Pledge of Allegiance, this is the flag of the United States of America in a truly public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipresent, eternal.
Okay, moving on. Item five is our Student Liaison Update. Mr. Stark?
Tonight, we have some students from our Speech and Debate Club that came to speak.
Okay, hi, I'm Nikki Peter, and I'm the President of Speech and Debate here at Vermillion. And this is David Dotson, and Kennedy Hughes, and Kylie Gwynn. And we'll all be attending, we all qualified, and we will all be attending the National Tournament for Speech and Debate at Fort Lauderdale this summer, so, this June, actually. So everyone's gonna kinda just talk about like what they do individually, and how we got to where we are today, and like what our program's like.
So I'm Kennedy, I'm Kennedy, and I qualified two nuts in, I qualified before this debate team known as the World Schools Team, the same as Nikki. What I usually do is Lincoln Douglas Debate, which is a one-on-one debate about morals and ethics and societal welfare. Usually, the work that I put into it is about six hours of prep for cases, and then debating, taking up multiple Saturdays throughout the year. The experience that I've had this year is by far the best experience that I've had with speech and debate thus far, because I've gotten closer with all of the members of my team personally, and then the members of other teams getting closer with other debaters that we also have here in the Cleveland District and across the state. What I need to do to prep for Nationals this summer is not only learn a new version of debate that I've never done before, that old schools debate, but also prepare those cases once our resolutions are announced. And I just wanted to thank you personally for supporting our forensics team and our speech and debate team.
I'm David Dotson, I'll be competing in Big Questions this year at Nationals. I've done this event for really its entire existence, because it only became a thing last year, and so I went to Nationals last year in the event as well. So this will be my second time competing there, and it's really just been a great experience, because Big Questions is something that really everyone can participate in, because it, you can either have one person on one person, or one on two, or two on two. And so you can either work with someone, or work alone, and I really love that flexibility that it gives people. But it also talks a lot about morals, but it also talks about the scientific side of things. It talks about a wide spectrum of topics, so that everyone has something that they can contribute to the debate as a whole. And that's actually one of the reasons why this debate has been used as a fundraiser in multiple schools, and has, I think I read, it's raised about a hundred thousand or so dollars across the nation, just for high schools alone. And that's just from schools hosting and turning in with about three or four people at least, and them all just talking about the issue. For example, this year's topic was humans are fundamentally different from other animals. Last year's was science leaves no room for free will. So it's obviously something that has a large scope, but yet has such great impact, especially across the high schools. And again, the real reason why we're here to talk about it, and the real reason why we love you guys' support, is because of all of these benefits, and how they help us not only progress ourselves, but really everyone that we interact with in the future. So I just wanna also thank you guys again.
And again, I'm Nikki. Throughout the competitive season, with the debate season, I do public forum debate with Liberty Oliver, and it's like a partner debate event. The topics mainly concern like international relations, like current events topics. So some examples is like whether or not we should pay college student athletes was one of the topics that we had this year. So we kinda talk about that throughout the season, and then for Nationals, I'm with Kennedy doing World Schools Debate, and I talked here last year, before I went to Nationals last year, on the same, in the same forum debate, and our team actually tied for ninth in the nation. So speech and debate is like really, over the past four years, like speech and debate's honestly given me everything. Like, I'm now going to, going to be going to college to major in international relations, and I don't think that I would've like chosen that career pathway and that major, I would've been so excited about it without debate, because really, like, we put so much effort into this. Like Kennedy said, like, it's hours, hours during the week, like extra school, so much fun. And then hours, like, how long are the tournaments, like, like an eight-hour tournament or something like that, every week? And it never ends, because it starts in the fall, like, early fall, like, September, October-ish. And then, we're continuing into the postseason, Kennedy and I will be driving out to Hockett School in Cleveland at least once a week to prepare for Nationals. And then, not only is debate giving me like friends, both inside Vermillion and outside Vermillion, it's also giving me a job, sometimes, because I now coach for university schools, which is a private boys' school out of Cleveland also, for three weeks out of the year, out of the summer, as a debate coach. So really, like, speech and debate's shaped my high school experience, and it's like, it's something that's really important to me, and like, I'm really passionate about, that's why I'm president and vice president, and so like, I can't thank you guys enough for your support, because it's really transformed my high school experience from, like, I would be in a very different place, I'd be a lot less confident of a person, and I wouldn't excel in my classes nearly as much if I didn't have speech and debate.
Hi, my name's Kylie Gwynn. I do congressional debate, which pretty much every week, we get a docket, like what Congress would see, real-life Congress, with normally like six to seven pieces of legislation, and we write a speech either for it or against it, and we'll sit in a room with like twenty, thirty kids sometimes, debating the pieces of legislation. So you'll go up and give a speech in support of it, or against it, and we follow procedures like what Congress would do. So we vote on the legislation, debate, we ask each other questions about it. So it's pretty much just, like I said, a mock Congress session. So it's a little bit different than these debate events, which are a little bit more intimate and one-on-one, we interact with a lot more people, and we call each other like representatives, and we can write our own legislation and turn it in to talk about. So just for some examples, like this year, we debated about placing sanctions on China, or instituting like single-gendered classrooms in high schools and colleges. So it's a wide variety of topics, and like I said, they refresh every week, so it's like spending, you know, an extra three or four hours every week outside of school prepping for it, but it's helped me become so much more confident and well-versed in the issues, especially since what we're debating about is something that Congress might actually debate about one day. So I'm up to date on, you know, current event issues and topics that are actually affecting America. And like, before speech and debate, I was somebody that was like really shy, and I was terribly afraid to like speak in front of people, so like, the amount of confidence this event can give you, and the ability it gives you to grow as a person, and like expand your knowledge, is truly phenomenal. So I'll be going to Nationals in congressional debate, and then I was also fortunate enough to make it to the final round at the state tournament, and I actually placed sixth in the state for congressional debate. So it's something I'm very passionate about, and I'm very excited to continue this in the summer, and yeah, I'm very thankful for all the opportunities that speech and debate has given me, and thankful for you guys for supporting the activity so much. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
You guys do a great job representing our schools, so thank you for what you do. And Mr. Snook too, right?
Yes.
He does an awesome job. Item six, Legislative Update.
Okay, so there have been a lot of bills introduced this past month, so I'm gonna be keeping an eye on a couple of these. House Bill 540 is, was introduced to revise the statewide teacher evaluation framework. Doesn't give me a whole lot of information on each one yet, but I'm gonna keep looking into a couple of them. House Bill 549, to require public and private schools to open for instruction after Labor Day. House Bill 559, to revise the law on immunization of children enrolled in school, preschool, and daycare programs. And then Senate Bill 276, to authorize student expulsions for actions that endanger the health and safety of students or school employees. That's what I've got.
All right, thanks, Sarah. Item seven, Reports, Superintendent's Report.
I'd like to start off tonight by having Rob Lashford, the Principal Partner from Lasko, come up to the microphone. He's here to present the school district with a certificate or an award, basically based on the construction, but I'll let Rob give you the details on what was needed for that accomplishment.
Great, thank you. Just wanted to start by thanking you all for allowing us to be part of your project. It was a groundbreaking project. A lot of people have looked at that and wished they had a building like yours. So you guys had the foresight to desire a 21st century learning environment in your new building, and yours is truly 21st century, where you have common spaces, where you have, you know, flexible, adaptable spaces with the operable partitions. A lot of projects say they're 21st century, but don't go as far as you guys went, so I commend you for that. And part of having a 21st century learning environment, you also had the foresight to desire to be energy efficient and environmentally sound. And so what you asked us to do is to make sure we design the building so that it could be registered with the USGBC, which is the United States Screen Building Council. They have different levels that you can reach, depending on how much that you put into your building, things like energy efficiency, low VOC materials, recycled materials, they even have things like parking spaces for electric cars, transportation, just a variety of things, daylighting, a number of things that you can achieve, and the more you achieve, the higher rating that you get. So we went for LEED Silver Certification, which all the other projects in the state, when you're doing a co-funded project, they're required to be LEED Silver. So you achieve the same thing that the rest of the buildings that are being built in the state have. So we just have a plaque that I wanted to present to you, that just commemorates the fact that you have a LEED Silver certified building, and it's registered with the USGBC, as I said. And so that's, it's a very unique thing. Again, we thank you for the opportunity to work with you. It was a great project, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Ronnie. Bonnie Myers here tonight, so Bonnie, we're gonna hand this off to you, and if you can find a place for that in your building, and we've got the mounting brackets and things that'll
Okay, great, thank you.
... and achieve, but thank you.
Stop.
Thanks, Ronnie.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on my agenda tonight is Relay for Life Reminder. The Relay for Life was traditionally held here in Vermillion, and usually done in early summer, late spring, and they decided that they were going to take another option and move it outside of Vermillion, and I think that they realized that Vermillion has been a great spot for the Relay for Life to continue, so they decided to bring it back this year, and it will be held inside, actually. And I've got a few, a few posters here, or just a little announcement on it for anyone that wants to take it, I'll just set it up on the table over there this evening. So it's this Saturday, it's at four o'clock, it's in the high school, and we've been planning this with Lisa DeLees, we made sure that they had their room available for the Relay for Life, and it's gonna be a great event, so we just wanna remind the public that that is available, and it's from four to 10:00. And that usually generates a lot of money for the benefit of cancer survivors, and so just a reminder, and I'll put these out on the table for anyone that wants to come up and grab one later on. So just a quick reminder, Relay for Life this Saturday, from four to 10:00. Okay, the next item on my agenda was a Safety Committee Update, and Lisa, if I could give you some of these, and Bonnie, would you mind passing these out to the people in the audience? I got, let me just take, yeah, let me pass them down to the board members here as well.
You don't feel you want me to do that one?
Yeah. All right. We promised the community that we would come back to them this evening for an update on the Safety Forum that we held back on March 4th. There was about 275 people that attended that forum that evening, or that, yeah, it was an evening, it was a Sunday evening. And what the charge was for our district was to come back with a written plan of what we intend to do in the future, in terms of upgrading our security measures, because we know what happened in Parkland, and we know what's been happening around the nation. And so, basically, in that forum, if you look on the sheet that says Safety Forum Update, there's some categories that got broken down as a result of that meeting. There were some building updates, suggestions, personnel additions, safety precautions, and social and emotional learning. Those were broken down as the main categories that came out of the meeting that night. And there were some universal things, there was a big long list that we put up actually on the website at the beginning, and then we broke these down into categories, because there were some things that were repetitive. And what we wanted to do was make sure that everyone was heard at that forum, and their ideas were taken down, and they were listed, and we put them up on Facebook, Twitter, and on the website. What we then did was take, we took a task force, and we analyzed the list, and we broke these down into the categories that I just named. The task force was comprised of a couple of our principals and an outside member, actually a former superintendent, Bruce Keller, was there, and he's helped us on this committee. Our SRO officer was on the committee, our operations director was there, so it was just a variety of people that were on the, on a subgroup of task force that analyzed this list. We broke it down into those categories based on the things that we saw that were not repetitive. And if you look at item number five, what we're doing there in that task force is we tried to think about how we can come up with ideas and improvements to the district that would be small dollar item improvements, that wouldn't cost us much money, and that could be done easily. So one of the things that we've been doing every day, and at each building, the principals have made an announcement to the students, because this has been a concern, is that if the doors get opened by students or other people, that that's compromising safety. So every single day now, those announcements are going out, reminding the students, no matter if you know them or not, you just don't open doors for people. We've been making sure that we're trying to put as many staff members as we can at the, at the entries of every entrance, and I've, I know at the high school, because we're here every day, that I personally met with some student leadership teams, and they've told me that they've noticed an increase in the amount of our staff members that are around the door. So that's become an immediate improvement that we've done here at the school, and I'm sure that that's going on. I'm not usually there at the openings of the buildings for elementary, but I'm assuming that that's happening at the elementary building and in the middle school. So I'm sure that that's helping as well. One of the things that we're going to be doing, and this is a low-cost item, is right now, we have a crisis bag, and I brought that to the last board meeting to show people what it was like. Basically, it's just like a little small duffel bag. We're going to change that into a backpack, because that's something that is more easily put on a, on a teacher's back and carried, because there, if you're gonna get into a crisis situation, you're gonna wanna have your, your hands available to, to do other things, to assist other people, to help out. So we're gonna get a highly visible bag, I think an orange or yellow type bag, that will be thrown over the shoulders of, of the teacher that is in charge of the building, that they'll, of the classroom that they'll grab as they go out. Inexpensive item that can be added. One thing that we've seen other, other buildings do is they have a crisis binder that's a little bit different than ours. We've got a, a hardback, just old-fashioned binder. They, they put it into a, more of a smaller unit that is tabbed and easier to look through. In an emergency situation, you don't wanna be fumbling around with any type of a binder. And so it's a low-cost item that we're gonna be able to purchase at the building level, and making sure that it's more user-friendly. A bottled water, believe it or not, you don't think that that's a big item, but if there's gonna be a crisis, we know that there's water, it's gonna be needed by some people that, for whatever reason, are gonna need to have that source. One of the things that we don't have right now that we're also purchasing is this large trauma. It's basically gonna be a bucket that has some tourniquets, and some things that are needed in a bigger crisis situation, and bandages, and it all comes in a, in a package, in a packet that is sold by medical companies that do this specifically for trauma. So that's an improvable point that we saw that came up from this Safety Forum, that we know that it's gonna make our, our district better. So those are some small-cost items that we're gonna be doing immediately. Under number six, this is where now, we're gonna have to have a continual discussion with the board about some of the larger dollar items. We know we have one full-time SRO officer, Brian Beckwith, that does a fantastic job, and that came out loud and clear in the forum, is that the community, the kids, the staff, they all feel that our SRO is valuable to us, and we're looking to hire another one, possibly two, that'll have to be a discussion, most likely one, because we're thinking that that SRO can go between the two buildings, the elementary and the middle school, but we can talk about that, that's open for discussion. One of the other things that came out loud and clear was mental health, and the need to, beyond counseling, offer some sort of training and expertise in the mental health area. And we wanna hire one per building, that would be a healthcare provider as well as a social worker, and be able to counsel, to add, to help families in need, help students in need that would have, to, to be there for anything that they could possibly need in, in terms of mental health. One of the things that we also said, and this really would not be a cost to us, is to reevaluate what our present counselors are doing. One of the things that we don't want our counselors to be doing is just too much paperwork and involved with things that they're not working with students, and helping them in their time of need, and so we're, we're making sure that we're going to be looking at their job duties and helping with that. As you go down the list here, one of the things that we, we said that we can do is upgrade cameras at the middle school and the high school, the building needs, upgrade our entry with a DVR and a fingerprint access. That can be done now. That, that's really not that large of a cost, that was put under large dollar items, but technically, the DVR can, can be done at a fairly reasonable cost.
What's a DVR?
It's a, a video recorder, basically, that we do have at the elementary building, but needs to be upgraded at the middle school and at the, at the high school. So we also have talked about fingerprint access. The state-of-the-art way to get into buildings now, as they're being built, is to have the thumbprint or a fingerprint, and they're really, the cost has come down on those quite a bit. So when we're putting large dollar items on some of these, it's a little bit misleading. We'll, we'll break those down further for you in, in the board meetings as we move along, and we continue to discuss these. The visitor check-in card reader is something we are going to do right away. The cost on that is between $350, $350 to $1,000 per building. And basically, what that does is, it prints out a pass, or it prints out a badge. Sean, you wanna talk a little bit more about the capacity of what those readers do?
It scans your driver's license, and then search whatever databases we decide to pay for, have access to, such and other databases, those kinds of databases, and then either print, print a visitor badge that will expire, goes, goes white after eight hours, I believe, or doesn't print one, and then the secretary or administration will have to, you know, let the person know why they're unable to access the buildings.
And they're fairly, not fairly, they're very fast, it's, when someone comes up and gives their ID, it will be a turnaround time of less than a minute, from what I'm understanding now. We used to have one of these many years ago, but it was too cumbersome, and the software for the machine became outdated, and it just wasn't practical. They now have these machines that are much more sophisticated and able to do a better job, so we are definitely gonna add that right away, just like the DVR in the other two buildings. Those are two items on the list that will be done, that add, could add to the top of the list as well. Okay, really, number seven got put down below, so I'm gonna skip number seven, and I'm gonna talk about, the two items that really would cost us the most are the SRO officer and the social worker, mental health professional. Jim, do you wanna say anything about the mental health professional, and what, what you think the need for that is?
Yes, in combination of social worker, someone else to identify mental health needs of the students. Also, we're coming up with a comprehensive plan that we'll be looking at, what the counselors are actually doing, and they're in the classroom, some of them are, but we need to do more of that. We're tied into the social-emotional learning. That was a huge piece, I mean, we're at the forum, where people talk about how we need to get kids to get along better, to stop the bullying, to talk to each other, to get to know each other. We're already starting that with a summer professional development, June 7th, 8th, and then again in August, we're providing teachers with training on social-emotional learning for four hours. So we're not, we're already starting if the doors get opened by students or other people, that that's compromising safety. So, every single day now those announcements are going out reminding the students, no matter if you know them or not, you just don't open doors for people. We've been making sure that we're trying to put as many staff members as we can at the entries of every entrance. And I've, I know at the high school, because we're here every day, that I personally met with some student leadership teams and they've told me that they've noticed an increase in the amount of our staff members that are around the door. So, that's become an immediate improvement that we've done here at the school. And I'm sure that that's going on. I'm not usually there at the openings of the buildings for elementary, but I'm assuming that that's happening at the elementary building and in the middle school. So, I'm sure that that's helping as well. One of the things that we're going to be doing, and this is a low-cost item, is right now we have a crisis bag, and I brought that to the last board meeting to show people what it was like. Basically, it's just like a little small duffel bag. We're going to change that into a backpack because that's something that is more easily put on a teacher's back and carried because there, if you're going to get into a crisis situation, you're going to want to have your hands available to do other things, to assist other people, to help out. So, we're going to get a highly visible bag, I think an orange or yellow type bag that will be thrown over the shoulders of the teacher that is in charge of the building, that they'll, of the classroom that they'll grab as they go out. Inexpensive item that can be added. One thing that we've seen other buildings do is they have a crisis binder that's a little bit different than ours. We've got a hardback, just old-fashioned binder. They put it into a, more of a smaller unit that is tabbed and easier to look through. In an emergency situation, you don't want to be fumbling around with any type of a binder. And so, it's a low-cost item that we're going to be able to purchase at the building level and making sure that it's more user-friendly. A bottled water, believe it or not, you don't think that that's a big item, but if there's going to be a crisis, we know that there's water is going to be needed by some people that, for whatever reason, are going to need to have that source. One of the things that we don't have right now that we're also purchasing is this large trauma. It's basically going to be a bucket that has some tourniquets and some things that are needed in a bigger crisis situation and bandages. It all comes in a package, in a packet that is sold by medical companies that do this specifically for trauma. So, that's an improvable point that we saw that came up from this safety forum that we know that it's going to make our district better. So, those are some small-cost items that we're going to be doing immediately. Under number six, this is where now we're going to have to have a continual discussion with the board about some of the larger dollar items. We know we have one full-time SRO officer, Brian Beckwith, that does a fantastic job. And that came out loud and clear in the forum is that the community, the kids, the staff, they all feel that our SRO is valuable to us. And we're looking to hire another one, possibly two, that would have to be a discussion, most likely one, because we're thinking that SRO can go between the two buildings, the elementary and the middle school. But we can talk about that, that's open for discussion. One of the other things that came out loud and clear was mental health and the need to, beyond counseling, offer some sort of training and expertise in the mental health area. And we want to hire one per building. It would be a healthcare provider as well as a social worker and be able to counsel, to add, to help families in need, help students in need that would have, to be there for anything that they could possibly need in terms of mental health. One of the things that we also said, and this really would not be a cost to us, is to reevaluate what our present counselors are doing. One of the things that we don't want our counselors to be doing is just too much paperwork and involved with things that they're not working with students and helping them in their time of need. And so, we're making sure that we're going to be looking at their job duties and helping with that. As you go down the list here, one of the things that we said that we can do is upgrade cameras at the middle school and the high school. The building needs upgrade our entry with a DVR and a fingerprint access. That can be done now. That's really not that large of a cost. That was put under large dollar items, but technically the DVR can be done at a fairly reasonable cost.
What's a DVR?
It's a video recorder, basically, that we do have at the elementary building, but needs to be upgraded at the middle school and at the, at the high school. We also have talked about fingerprint access. The state-of-the-art way to get into buildings now as they're being built is to have the thumbprint or fingerprint. And they're really, the cost has come down on those quite a bit. So, when we're putting large dollar items on some of these, it's a little bit misleading. We'll break those down further for you in the board meetings as we move along and we continue to discuss these. The visitor check-in card reader is something we are going to do right away. The cost on that is between $350, $350 to $1,000 per building. And basically, what that does is it prints out a pass or it prints out a badge. Sean, you want to talk a little bit more about the capacity of what those readers do?
It scans your driver's license and then search whatever databases we decide to pay for or have access to, such and other databases, those kinds of databases, and then either print a visitor badge that will expire, goes white after eight hours, I believe, or doesn't print one, and then the secretary or administration will have to let the person know why they're unable to access the buildings.
And they're fairly, not fairly, they're very fast. It's when someone comes up and gives their ID, it will be a turnaround time of less than a minute, from what I'm understanding now.
Right.
We used to have one of these many years ago, but it was too cumbersome and the software for the machine became outdated and it just wasn't practical. They now have these machines that are much more sophisticated and able to do a better job. So, we are definitely going to add that right away, just like the DVR and the other two buildings. Those are two items on the list that will be done that could add to the top of the list as well. Really, number seven got put down below, so I'm going to skip number seven and I'm going to talk about. The two items that really would cost us the most are the SRO officer and the social worker, mental health professional. Jim, do you want to say anything about the mental health professional and what you think the need for that is? Jim?
Yes. In combination of social worker, someone else to identify mental health needs of the students. Also, we're coming up with a comprehensive plan that we'll be looking at, what the counselors are actually doing, and they're in the classroom, some of them are, but we need to do more of that. We're tied into the social-emotional learning. That was a huge piece, even at the forum, where people talk about how we need to get kids to get along better, to stop the bullying, to talk to each other, to get to know each other. We're already starting that with a summer professional development, June 7th, 8th, and then again in August, we're providing teachers with training on social-emotional learning for four hours. So, we're not, we're already starting this. We're going to talk with the district leadership team Wednesday about social-emotional learning, want everyone to really understand what it is and how we can implement it and how it will help the students. And there's research that doing more social-emotional learning will also help in the academics, which makes sense because kids won't be so worried about who doesn't like them or who did something in social media, who talked about them, and how they should deal with it. So, we're not really sure yet how many mental health providers we need until we do a real thorough evaluation of what we have already, the staff we already have, how we can use them more efficiently, and then go on from there with the mental health professional. That would be able to get more to the details to the families and to the students that show that they need more help with that, in that area.
Thanks, Jim. So, the two big items that we see that are outlined there are going to be the mental health professionals and the SRO officers. We did talk at the forum briefly about the fact that there is a special levy that can be put on the ballot that was really instituted right here in Vermillion. It started with our past board members that looked into that. I think, Chris, were you part of that as well?
Yeah, Shelley and I were.
Shelley as well, and a couple other board members that were here in the past that instituted that through the, through a bill that was basically passed specifically for this. And if we do decide to put this on the ballot, I put down what one mill would generate in one year's time, and you could see it there, it's $443,000. If we get a half a mill, obviously, it's half of that. What I think we need to do is, I'm recommending that we do some more assessments, some more working in this task force. As Jim just said, we don't know until we talk with our counselors a little bit more as to what can be done to interface with them, with the counselors, and to give the things that we need to our students and to our community. This is going to take a little bit more to plan out, to work out. But you see what the cost is here, and it's a start, and we need to put this up on the November ballot. Some people are wondering why we wouldn't put it on before that. The November ballot gives us the opportunity to defer a lot of the costs. If you put this on the ballot before this, we have to bear the brunt of a lot of the costs that are associated with putting that on the ballot before this. I think it's really in excess of almost $30,000. At first, I thought it was close to 10, but it could be up to $30,000. And that just wouldn't be very cost-effective because if we didn't pass it, the district then is on the line for the $30,000. And if you did, that's taking $30,000 right off the top of the budget that you're getting for. So, I think it's wise that we are going to do this, to think about putting it on the November ballot. And I think it also then gives us more time to work out exactly what it is that we might want to be proposing to do. We are proposing an SRO, we are proposing social workers, but, and healthcare providers, but we just need more details.
Do you have a ballpark figure of an SRO officer? Does Brian currently?
You know, it varies. I don't want to throw a number there because it could be different circumstances as to if you would hire someone from the sheriff's office or you would hire someone from the police department. Chief Hartung did send some numbers to us, but he says that there's some flexibility of how we would work that out.
Okay.
So, let us work on the numbers a little bit more before I...
I think for all these large dollar items, if we could have just ballpark figures so we know what's...
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think for the November ballot, we've got to decide by the first week of August.
Yeah, we don't have a whole lot of time. We're going to have to work on this diligently now in August to make sure that we're on it. So, as part of this safety forum, once again, one of the things that we promised that we would do is to offer to our parents some topics that we thought, that we gave them the opportunity to basically rank and to determine what they think were the most important. What came up was recording suspicious behaviors, bullying, mental health challenges, cell phone and social media use by students, suicide prevention, peer pressure, school cliques and academic anxiety. So, based on that, the first seminars that we're going to hold, and I gave you all a pamphlet on it, a flyer on it, it will be this coming April 21st, 2018, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And so, it's just a two-hour event, and we're going to heavily advertise this and continue to advertise it. And this is a fantastic opportunity because we've got a national speaker that's coming in for this event. That national speaker will be here in advance of that, the day before, to work with our middle school students and our high school students to talk about some of the things that you really have to watch out with in terms of the current trends, the dark web, digital branding, all the things that are on this sheet. I'm not going to read them all off because you have that in front of you, but it's just a fantastic opportunity and event for our community. So, I'm going to go to Rotary, make sure that our community knows about it through Rotary. We've been advertising this on our web. We've been putting this out in as many ways as we can. We're also going to do an all-call to parents, letting them know that this is available. And we don't like to overutilize that all-call system, but I think that this is one important event that they need to know that we're making this available to the community. And I highly recommend that any parent that has a student and any student that is interested to hear about these topics come because I think it's going to be a powerful event and it's free, obviously. And we will do a breakfast before the event starts. At 9:15, breakfast will be available to the community, so we want this to be a community event. And we'll talk a little bit more then about what we are doing in terms of safety at that breakfast before we start the 10 o'clock event. So, that's not all that was talked about within this task force. That group did a really good job, and we continue to work on this often. And as a board, if you have any concerns or questions about any of this, or you want to add some things that you might want to say, I know Shelley's been able to attend a couple of the meetings, and she's been able to add some of her ideas, and anyone else that wants to come as a board member. We can't have three of you there, of course, but if any two board members wanted to come, that'll be great. And I think that we've come a long ways with this task force. These are things that we would be working on irregardless of whether this happened in Parkland. We're always looking to work in that crisis team to upgrade what we're doing, and we always want to get better. But I think that this is quite a bit here, and I think that this offers the community some options, and it offers the board and our district something to think about. So, I don't know how you all feel about it, but we can discuss it.
When is the next meeting?
With the crisis team?
Yeah.
I'll send you a text. I think it's going to be sometime at the beginning of... Is it Friday?
It's Friday.
Thanks, Sean.
Where is that at?
It's right here, in the board office.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can make it, that'll be great. Any questions on, anything that you see on the sheet, any concerns? Are you all in agreement that we should continue working on the fact that we might put something on the ballot in November?
Get some more information.
We'll get you some numbers, we'll get you some costs, and we'll let you know.
Thank you. I think that you and Jim Blata and the task force have done a great job since the safety forum in coming up with ideas and moving forward.
Yeah, Jim has worked really hard on this social-emotional piece here, and he was instrumental in getting this speaker, and I think Lisa, were you, or was it Bonnie, that worked on getting the speaker in too? I'm not sure.
Corgi, sorry.
Corgi, sorry.
We'll give her the credit.
This is good progress, though.
Yeah.
Appreciate the effort.
That's great.
Okay, and then the last thing that I have on my agenda, my superintendent's report, is to recommend a resolution to award a one-year additional duty contract for the 2000, actually, this should be the...
1819.
1819. So, if you could just write that date, make that 1819? Well, actually, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's 201819. To Leah Ennis for the following positions, 2017-18 teacher-directed seminar, National History Grade Level 2. 2018-2019 Head Cheerleader Advisor for Football at the High School, Level 11. 2018-2019 Head Cheerleader Advisor Basketball at the High School, Level 11.
I'll move in a second.
Do you want me to call the rule?
Just a minute, okay. He's got a meeting, man, so he can't call the rule.
Ms. Ennis?
I'm staying.
Ms. Stebb?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haverman?
Yes.
Motion approved 3-1.
That's all I have on the superintendent's report.
M. Treasury's report. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. The first part here, we need to make a recommendation for a board member or two to serve on the 2018 Vermillion Schools Records Retention Commission.
What does that entail?
About an hour.
Before I say yes.
It's about 15 hours.
What's the pay?
It's going to be about, it's going to be about an hour, hour to a half an hour of your time. Basically, we have a bunch of records that need to be disposed of, and we need to know whether it needs to go to the Historical Society or not. And it's simply just going through and giving the approval. We'll have everything set up prior.
Okay, I'll do it.
Okay. So, in that recommendation resolution to appoint Ms. Stebb and Ms. Ennis to serve on the 2018 Vermillion School Board Records Retention Commission.
I'll move in a second.
Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Ms. Stebb?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haverman?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. Next is to recommend a resolution to approve the March 31st, 2018 financial reports, and those are attached with A.
I'll move.
One second.
Would you prefer I go through this or just...
Maybe hit some highlights?
Okay. Just to quickly go over, the first table that you're looking at there is your general fund, your revenue by month. Typically, what I like to do is get a historical look at revenues, expenditures, and cash balances by month. What this is, is this is July 1st through March, and so far, the district has received $22.0 million in the general fund compared to last year at this time, $21.2 million, and the year prior, $20.9. Overall, revenues are higher now than they have been in the past slightly, but overall, it's pretty flat. Looking at food service, again, food service is important because if they're not running a positive cash flow, it's going to be a subsidy to the general fund. So, we always want to make sure that our food service is provided like an enterprise fund should. Through the month of March, food service has brought in $486,000. Last year at this time, $507,000. I would say the big difference here, a lot more calamity days, calamity days end up hurting the revenue there. And then lastly, just looking at all funds. All funds, through March, the district has received $23.7 million. Last year at this time was $23.6 million. So, again, we're very flat with our revenues. Next, we want to take a look at expenditures. Again, it's always good to see where your revenues show up, but we also want to compare that to our expenditures. Through the month of March, we've expended $17.6 million in the general fund this year compared to $18.4 million last year and $15.2 million in fiscal year '16. So, we saw a jump in expenditures from '16 to '17, and we've tended, we've curved those back down this year. Looking at food service, the district's expended $486,000, and last year at this time, we were $452,000. And then last is all funds. Expenditures for all funds through March, $19.6 million, and we were at $20.5 last year. So, again, we have higher revenues compared to last year and lower expenditures. And next, we want to take a look at the general cash fund. Through the month of March, $16.3 million in cash compared to last year, $16.8, and the year before that, $17.4. So, again, we started to make changes, and the changes are due to cash, basically the cash starting to completely decline. And then taking a look at food service cash, through the month of March, roughly $270,000. Last year, they had $274,000. So, again, it's in a good financial position as far as the food service fund's concerned. And then looking at all cash, again, this includes all your federal funds, all your student activity funds. Through the month of March, in cash, right now, we're at $21.6 million compared to last year, $20.4. So, again, the general fund is the one that seems a burden of depleting cash flow a little bit. But again, with the productions and expenditures and the increases in revenue, we're hopefully going to finish off a little bit better than at the end of the year. Moving on to the schedule of investments, I put a little bit of history in here, but this month, in interest alone, we've collected $28,000. Fiscal year to date, we have collected $155,000 in interest alone, which is a great thing that helps subsidize a lot of salaries there. And then the five-year forecast comparison, similar to the first projection there, but what we have, broke it down a little bit different than you typically see a five-year forecast as far as somebody is concerned. Looking at our property taxes, we've collected $722,000 more in property taxes throughout the month of March, or I should say, from July until March compared to last year, but we're losing a little bit of money on the state foundation. Basically, breaking even there with the homestead rollback and another quarter million dollars all operating revenue. So, so far, from July through March of this year, we're $738,000 more in revenue than we were last year at this time. Looking on the expenditure side for the five-year forecast, we're a little bit higher in salaries by $227,000 compared to last year at this time, but we've made up for it by reductions in insurance of $233,000, reductions to purchase services by $276,000, reductions to supplies and materials by $130,000, and reductions to capital outlay by $180,000. The next line there is just the debt, House Bill 264, which we've, I believe, paid off, other interest and other objects. Again, that's just all the debt payments that we have. And when you roll it all up, our revenue over expenditure, that bottom line, we're $600,000 better than we were this year last time, or last year. Now, there's a lot of things that happened between March, April, and May, June that offset some of those things, particularly with property tax payments and everything else. But I will point out that last year, we finished 300, or I'm sorry, $39,200 above breaking even. So, we're in line there to finish somewhere, you know, according to the forecast and putting in some updates, where we're looking to be within a couple hundred thousand dollars of that right now as well. And then again, I'm expecting a true-up in property taxes in June. We've collected a lot more in property taxes this year without increasing the tax rate. Some of it might be to higher assessed property values, which we collect a little bit more in Inside Village. Our collection rate might be a little bit higher, I'm not exactly sure just yet why we're collecting that $722,000 more in property tax. Could be a timing issue.
That's what I was going to ask, is it a timing thing where it's going to level out at some point?
That's kind of what I'm anticipating.
Hopefully not to the tune of $600,000.
Hopefully not to the tune of $600,000, but right now, compared to March last year, we're in a lot better financial position. But again, when you're looking at that bottom line of $39,000, what we finished last year, just a couple hundred thousand dollars either way, it's still a pretty razor-thin line there. just a couple hundred thousand dollars either way, it's still a pretty razor-thin line there. Any other questions?
Is there anything going through, and I know it may be not a fair question yet, anything going through that concerns you at this point?
The only thing that concerns me, and again, it's not a, it's not a big number, but one of the reasons the state collection is down is we've had a decrease in our state share index. Basically, our valuation per pupil has gone up, which then decreases our state share index, which basically is saying the state is saying, Vermillion's wealthier this year than you were last year, therefore, we're going to cut your funding a little bit. And so, that's always concerning.
Theoretically, does that get made up in taxes, property tax?
No, your property taxes are always going to stay the same. You're just going to lose a little revenue understate, and what they're saying is that the, essentially what they're saying is you don't need as much state aid because your citizens now are wealthier than they were last year, and they can pick up the difference.
How's that measured?
Yeah, exactly. That's what they're saying.
And they're not wealthier than they were last year?
Yeah, I know, yeah, exactly. But that's based on all the formulas that they have down in Columbus, that's the way the formula rolls out. Now, I will say, we're also under guarantee, so we can't lose all that money based on, the only thing that could change that is a, I think it's a 5% or 10% decrease in enrollment. Once you start hitting that number, they'll start taking away a little bit more in that state share. And again, there'll be a true-up on that state share as well at the end of the year.
Great. All right, call roll on that one.
Let's see. Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haverman?
Yes.
Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0. It's recommended a resolution to pay Timothy Gentry to film girls' basketball games for the 2017-18 season, 22 games, a total of $550.
I'll move.
One second.
Question on this, I know I talked to you just earlier. Phil, here we are again. Do they not know at the beginning of basketball season that they're going to have someone film? And is this coming out of our, did you find anything yet, Justin? I didn't mean to put that on you. You've got everything else going on.
I had to check real fast just to make sure they had enough in their student activities fund, which they do.
So, it's going to come out of...
So, I've already spoken to payroll, and that's going to be coming out of...
Their individual accounts.
Their individual account, okay.
It's not going to come out of general funds.
Perfect. But still, we need to get these things, they're going to do it ahead of time.
So, one of the things that we talked about before was, and we've been talking about it for a long, long time, but in the interest of getting a little tighter with this kind of stuff, if something has to come to the board after the fact, then if this is athletics, then Mr. Stillman needs to come in and explain why it's after the fact. Or if it's a different department, they need to come explain why it's after the fact, if they want approval. Okay? All right. Call roll.
Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haverman?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0.
Item 8, discussion items. Are there any new business items among the board? Okay, item 9 is the consent agenda. The Superintendent of the Treasurer recommends that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately. Item A, minutes of the March 12th, 2018 board meeting. Item B, agreement for the educational services between Lorraine County Board of Developmental Disabilities and the Vermillion Local School District for services for Murray Ridge School. Item C, agreement in the educational, agreement for educational services with Applewood Centers, Inc. Item D, I'm sorry. I was thinking of the movie Jumanji. 2018-2019 multi-agreement contract for Educational Service Center of Lorraine County. Item E, 2018-19 school calendar to add calamity makeup days. Item F, appoint Justin Klingshern and Cynthia Akers as district records officers for 2018-19. G, 2018-2019 master service agreement with Meta for support of EMIS fiscal and student information systems. 2018-2019 multi-agreement contract with North Point Educational Service Center for Vermillion Local School District and St. Mary's School. Item I, adopt revisions to the following district policies and accompanying company and guidelines as recommended by NEOLA and the previously provided as listed. Item J, approve the following employment actions as listed. I'll move.
One second.
Any items that need to be pulled? Okay, call the roll, please.
Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haverman?
Yes.
Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0.
Item 10 is for items that were removed, there were none, so we'll move on. Item 11 is public participation. Anyone in the audience that would like to participate in the meeting, address the board, can step up to the podium with a microphone, tell us who you are and what's on your mind? Anyone? Nope? All right, thank you. Item 12, date and location of upcoming board meetings, located at Vermillion High School, 1250 Sanford Street, unless noted. Regular meeting, that's today's meeting, so I know that's a good one. Regular meeting Monday, May 21st, and that's a date change? And regular meeting Monday, June 11th. Why do we change May 21st?
For five-year forecasts, just to get it closer...
Okay.
...to the end of May, so we can have better numbers of that.
Got it. All right, anyone have any issues with any of those dates?
It's good to see the word June, though.
The temperature matches.
Should be 35 degrees by then. Item 13, recommend a resolution to move into executive session for the purpose of employment of public employees.
One second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haverman?
Yes.
Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Motion approved 4-0.